Be quiet and I'll call our board meeting to order. I appreciate everybody being here this evening, this afternoon. We, the first order of business is for us to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. We do have a quorum of our board team. Ms. Mazzell Flint's not be able to be with us this evening. She's out of town doing some training for her job. But that covers item one. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Mr. John Howard, the pastor at Church of Pentecost. He's also a choir director at Lincoln in Lakeview and he's going to lead us in our invocation this evening. Thank you for being here.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, Father of heaven, we are so grateful and thankful to you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our lives. Most of all, we're grateful to you, Lord, for our children and youth, the students that we are able to teach on a daily basis. We thank you for their talents and for their abilities and all of the accomplishments, Lord, that they have been able to accomplish with the talents and abilities that you have given to them and that they have developed. We thank you for their parents who support them and their guardians. We are so grateful, Lord, for the opportunity to work for them. Thank you for all of the teachers that we have in SAISD and I pray that you would be with them in their classrooms every day. We thank you, Lord, for our board and we thank you, Lord, for our administration and I pray that you would direct them as they deliberate on what is most important for our students and for our schools. We desire, Lord, to impart into the students that we teach every day, the knowledge that you have blessed us with so that the next generation can advance beyond where we have come. We thank you for your presence and we, that's here today. We thank you for salvation and we thank you for your love. Bless this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We appreciate that. Our next items are pledges. We're excited this evening to have three incredible students from Fort Concho, so if they'll come forward as I introduce their name. We have Adithi Patarala, Ashley Castaneda, and Daniel Casillas. If y'all will stand as we...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank y'all. And I'll have them stand there if anybody wants to come and take pictures or anything. Yeah. All these are fifth graders, so, fifth graders at Fort Concho.
Great job.
Yeah, thank y'all so much. I'll read our script before we get started with our recognitions. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Antonio Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students and our district. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month and most, if not all, the items on tonight's agenda have been previously discussed in an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SEISD's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an opportunity, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team the opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments in either one of these sections on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings will be recorded and will be, become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. I also ask that I remind my fellow board members to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. And tonight, first of all, we get to do one of the favorite things that our board does and that's recognize our students. So, at this time, I'm going to turn our meeting over to Jennifer Crutchfield and she's going to lead us through those recognitions. Thanks, Ms. Crutchfield.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We are pleased to recognize talented students from both Lakeview High School and Central High School. These students have all performed and excelled past the district level in music. Tonight, we will honor and recognize outstanding students from the Lakeview High School Choir, Mariachi and Band, as well as outstanding students from the Central High School Choir, Orchestra and Band. We know that participation in music programs impacts academic success for students. We also know that music directors build great relationships with students and cultivate an esprit de corps within their groups and programs. The SAISD learner profile skills of communicating, collaborating, creating, and thinking critically flourish in music ensembles. All of these skills help SAISD musicians excel in becoming future-ready. Thank you, families, for sharing your talented students with us. It is a privilege to watch them learn and grow. We recognize your important work as your child's first teachers, caregivers, and transportation organizers. We know you are so proud of your students and you should be. We're very proud of them too. Let's begin this evening with the Lakeview High School Choir, directed by John Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Crutchfield, and well said. It is so true that music really enhances the learning possibilities for our students and we see that very obvious in our state scores for SAT. And I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to recognize our students who have worked tremendously hard and overcome a lot of hurdles to be able to be advanced as they have beyond our district level. First, we would like to recognize Jeslyn Borrego. Jeslyn Borrego is a junior and she has advanced to State singing solo in Italian. Secondly, we would like to recognize Anna Rae. Anna's a sophomore and she advanced to all-region choir as well as to State in solo, also singing a piece in Italian. Next, we would like to recognize Rebecca Heroy. Rebecca Heroy advanced to all-region choir. Also, she advanced to pre-area as well as area and was just a few chairs short of going to State in the all-region choir process. Phenomenal, she did a phenomenal job. She also advanced to State in solo and she's singing an Italian piece as well. That's the kind I like the best, the Italian. Rebecca is also a junior. And finally, we have Shay Price and Shay Price is also a junior. And I'd like to mention that the majority of these girls here are also very involved in other things, theater, dance, and cheerleading, and so they're very, very busy. Shay has also advanced to State singing a solo as well and she was extremely sick the week before competition and was not able to make the competition and they allowed us to go to Odessa and sing there and she was able to advance, still overcome sickness. So, great job, ladies. It's been a privilege to work with you this year.
Good afternoon. We first wanted to thank everybody for all the support this last year and the last several years. For the third consecutive year, the Lakeview Mariachi has been able to advance to the State Contest in Edinburgh, Texas. A very, very competitive contest and, you know, I'm very, very proud of the students and their performance that they did there, represented West Texas very well. The only two schools from West Texas, us and Odessa. There's another school in Placido that was not able to make it down there, but very, very proud of the students. They did very well. And these are the students from the Lakeview Mariachi who represented us in Edinburgh. Fernando Aguirre, Daisy Cano, Isamari Cisneros, Monica Escandón, Deja Gomez, Fabian Heredia, Belén Hernández, Alani Jimenez, Adrian Mascorro, Aiden McGuire, Jackie Ortiz, Álvaro Ramos, Vanessa Ramos, Demetrio Rios, Clarissa Rodriguez, Miguel Romero Solís, Cassandra Salas, Joe Santillán, Freddie Saucedo, Amy Torres, Michaela Torres, and Analia Zamaron. These students, we all went down to Edinburgh and as you can imagine, Edinburgh is a pretty long way from here. So, it was interesting and we were on a bus for about seven hours and they started getting tired of everybody and each other, but it was an interesting ride on the way back as well, everybody. But they did very well and I'm very, very proud of all the work they've done. And again, I can't stress enough how grateful we are for the administration in Lakeview, for all the support that we get every year and it's, it really shows when you see the students on stage putting their best foot forward and representing the high school the best they can. So, thank y'all very much for all y'all's support. We appreciate it.
The band has also had a great year this year and we'd like to thank you too for all your support. And we are going to start with Anthony Ramirez. He made a first division in a percussion ensemble and a first division in a multiple percussion solo and will go to the State Solo and Ensemble Contest on both of those events. And he's also a member of the region band. Sierra Juarez, and she made a first division on a Barry Sack solo. Andy Martinez made a first division on a trumpet solo. Joe Munoz also made a first division on a trumpet solo. Adrian Foster is a member of the region band. Angel Chacon is a member of the region band. Vanessa Longoria was a member of the region band. Lexi Williams was a member of the region band. Marisol Vazquez was a member of the region band and she also qualified for area. Tara Plane made a first division on a woodwind ensemble, which she will take to the State Solo and Ensemble Contest and was also a member of the region band. Joseph Hockes made a first division on a brass quintet and he'll take that to State and he was also a member of the region band. Gavin Mahia made the region band and also certified to the area contest. He also made a first division on a brass quintet and will go to the State Solo and Ensemble Miguel Diaz made the region band, earned a first division on a brass quintet and a first division on a French horn solo and both of those events will go to the State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Andrew Mutka made the region band and certified to the area contest. He made a first division on a bass clarinet solo and a first division on a woodwind ensemble, both of which will go to State. Lillian Street made the region band on string bass and qualified for area and was a member of the all-state band. Gavin Davis made a first division on a brass quintet and a first division on a tuba solo, both which will go to State. He made the region band, certified the area contest, and was also a member of the all-state Sayana Soto is our, will be our senior drum major next year and she would like to present our three-event UIL Sweepstakes Trophy. The band made a first division at marching contest, concert contest, and sight-reading And last but not least, my partner in crime, Mr. Lance Mosley. All of this could not be possible without him and his help, so, Mr. Mosley.
Congratulations. Thanks for your hard work. Congratulations. All your hard work, your hours.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to present these students to you. We are very proud of the students that we have in the choir program at Central. We really believe that they're some of the hardest-working, multi-talented, kind-hearted, most, just good human beings and I think there's kids involved in music. They develop a lot of character that's not just, you know, the skills that they learn in music class, they're having to do with music, but also becoming great human beings. My name is Landon Gilmore. I'm the head choir director at Central. This is my eighth year and I'm assisted this evening with my wonderful cohort, Mrs. Sunday Vaught, who's our associate director. And so, we have a good group of students here tonight. I want to start though with just real quickly, the groups. We, you know, we go to UIL Concert and Sight-Reading Evaluations every year, the big groups. Last year, we took three in April and so we didn't get a chance to share that with you, but we have three groups that went. Our Concert Ladies Choir received first-division superior ratings from each judge in concert contests and a combined rating of excellent in sight-reading. Our Bella Voce Women's Choir received straight first-division superior ratings from all six judges in concert and sight-reading and got a Sweepstakes Trophy. And our varsity mixed chorus, the Bobcat Corral, it's mostly juniors and seniors, they received the same thing, first-division ratings from all six judges and varsity Sweepstakes Trophy. So, this year, we're actually going to take four groups here in about three more weeks. We go to Midland and almost 200 students will be going representing our schools for those four groups competing at that evaluation. So, we're hoping for another good year of results. Tonight, we've got some students that have competed in UIL Concert and Sight-Reading Contest, nope, UIL Solo and Ensemble Contest, and then students that auditioned for a region choir. So, I'll start introducing those students to you now. First, we have Kristen Alderate is advancing to State UIL Solo and Ensemble. Monte Amescuita was 10th Chair Bass for the Junior High All-Region Choir and is advancing to State UIL. Caroline Anderson, 11th Chair Soprano II for Junior High Region Choir and got a first division on her solo at UIL. Marissa Balderas, first-division solo. Krista Carroll made the High School Mixed Choir, was 12th Chair Alto II and is advancing to State UIL. Edith Castaneda is advancing to State UIL on a solo. Bryant Cobb is a senior. He made the mixed choir, who's first chair bass I in the region, placed third chair in the pre-area round and he tied for sixth chair at the final round that would have made him go to State as an all-state choir singer. And was it, was it sixth or fifth? It was sixth. And so, they had a tie and the tiebreaker went down to like .08 or something and it didn't go his way. So, that was, that was hard, but he's had a good year and he's also advancing to State UIL on a solo. His little brother, Peyton Cobb, is a ninth grader, 19th Chair Junior High All-Region Choir and he's going to State on a solo. Aneah Dixon, 11th Chair Alto I, Junior High All-Region, and did a first division on her solo. Camille Faunt made the All-Region Treble Choir and is advancing to State UIL. She's also an orchestra student. Jason Fowler, 20th Chair All-Region Junior High Choir and a first division on his solo. Madeline Garber, first-division solo. Jordy Garcia, second-chair alto on the Junior High All-Region Choir auditions. Olivia Gomos is a senior. She's going to State on her UIL solo. Andres Gonzalez, High School Mixed Choir All-Region, 10th Chair Baritone, advancing to State UIL. Renan Gonzalez, advancing to State UIL on a solo. Alana Green, another State UIL solo. Jasmine Gutierrez, first-division solo. Michaela Hare, All-Region Treble Choir, advancing State UIL. We've got some kids that couldn't be here tonight for other activities. Ally Hamby, first-division solo. Paige Harris, State UIL solo. Leilani Herrera, State UIL solo. Elijah Jackson, and he's a ninth grader. He made the High School All-Region Mixed Choir as fourth chair on tenor, advanced to pre-area and is also going to State on a UIL solo. Tyree Lewis, first-division solo. Carlos Luna advances to State UIL. Carlos, you also play baseball and football and what else? That's it. He stays busy. Rob, that's it, yeah. Robin Mackey, first-division solo. Kayden Martinez, High School Mixed Choir, 14th Chair Tenor II and advancing to State UIL on a solo. Brandon Medina, High School Mixed Choir, 8th Chair Baritone. And I think this next group of kids, we probably need to start going in front of these other ones. Braden Myers is advancing to State UIL. Pete Morela is advancing to State UIL on a solo. Ruth Morales, High School All-Region Mixed Choir, 12th Chair Soprano I, advancing to State UIL. Riannon Moss, All-High School All-Region Treble Choir, advancing to State UIL. Alexia Natibidad, first-division solo. Luke Oliver, State UIL. Hannah Olson, first-division solo. Theodore Pluff, High School Mixed Choir, 15th Chair Tenor. Caleb Primo, 21st Chair Tenor, High School, or excuse me, Junior High All-Region and a first-division solo. Savannah Rosani, Brianna Roberts, Bryn Ross, also first-division solos, they're not here. Olivia Rutherford, 20th Chair Junior High All-Region Choir. Skylar Smith, advancing to State UIL on a solo. Noelle Spate, State Solo. Kelsey Springfield, State UIL solo. Riley Steele, first-division solo at Regions, Regional. Sydney Stale, advancing to State UIL solo. Leanne Sweet, High School Mixed Choir. She made seventh chair at the region round, advanced to pre-area and placed sixth chair there. She's also advancing to State UIL on her solo. Zane Terry, first-division solo. Andy Thompson, Andrea Thompson, she corrected me. High School Treble Choir and advancing to State UIL solo. Jordan Torres, first-division solo. And Margarita Torres, first-division solo. Gloria Trevino, High School Mixed Choir, 12th Chair Soprano II, advancing to State UIL. Revine Valencia, State UIL. Malika Vazquez, State UIL soloist. Miranda Villarreal, State UIL soloist. Elizabeth Weinman, 20th Chair Junior High Soprano, first-division solo. Bethany Wheeler, High School All-Region Treble Choir. Michael Wiegand, first-division solo. And Kayden Wright, High School Mixed Choir, sixth-chair tenor II. He advanced to pre-area, third-chair tenor II and area and he's doing a solo at UIL State. So, a lot of kiddos. They, it sounds like they hand out those State solos, but they really don't. The kids just worked really hard this year, so congratulations, guys.
Hi, I'm Emily Rocha and I'd also like to introduce, this is Michael Martin. He's the Assistant Orchestra Director at Central High School and is doing a fantastic job. This is probably our favorite night of the year because we are so blessed to teach these awesome kids and it's a night that we get to recognize them for the things that they do individually. So, when I call your name, I just want you to come around here and we'll call out what you're doing, what you did. Okay. Joseph Morales achieved a one at UIL. Maya Reyes also performed a solo at UIL and achieved a one. That is the highest score, by the way. All right. Skylar Smith also achieved a one at UIL Solo and Ensemble. Jasmine Valdez achieved a one on a solo at Solo and Ensemble. Becca Jacobson, yes, that's you, performed and received a one at Solo and Ensemble, as well as Ariella Sarabia, Sarabia, sorry. Okay. Kayla Pluff also performed a solo at UIL Solo and Ensemble and she achieved a one, as well as Catherine Deanert and Bella Castilla, Amber Byrd, Christian Davila. And next is Ronaldo Agilon and he achieved a one at Solo and Ensemble, but he is also going to be majoring in Music Education at ASU and he's on scholarship. So, we're very proud of that. Now, this next group of kids not only achieved a one at Solo and Ensemble, but they are advancing to State. And what that entails is that they, they have to perform a Class I solo and memorize it and achieve the top score. So, that is Ella Favor, Marlee Lloyd. We had a couple that could not be here tonight, Clara Knapp, Avery Enberg, and Olivia Rowe. So, he recorded for State, the TMA All-State Orchestra, and he is also going to be performing at the Sydney Opera House this summer. And Camille Faunt, she is advancing to State and U I L Solo and Ensemble. She was in the All-Region Orchestra, recorded for State, and she recently just performed in Carnegie Hall. So, very, very proud of all these kids.
Finally, we introduce Mr. Joel Ashbrook, Director of the Central High School Band.
Good evening. I hope you're doing well. We love this time of the year as well because we get to showcase some of our students who have done exemplary work, have done above and beyond what they need to do to not only be a superior band student, but a citizen and a good student at Central High School. If you will go ahead, I'm going to read the list of names. We've got 20-some are not here. Say they're at work, we'll see. But just go ahead and come around while I call the names out. No, you can go. Go. Olivia Allen, State Ensemble. Bailey Bartholomew, All-Region, State Solo, State Solo and Ensemble. Autumn Brewer, State Ensemble. Robert Chapa, State Ensemble. Ryan Chavaria, State Solo. Ethan Clark, All-Region Band and All-Region Jazz Band. Josh Clayson, All-Region and State Solo. Carly Corran, State Solo and State Ensemble. Landon Davis, All-Region Band. Thomas Davis, All-Region, All-Area, All-Region Jazz, State Solo and State Ensemble. Mallory DeWitt, State Ensemble. Eric Diaz Falscher, State Ensemble. Dallas Dotson, State Ensemble. Brianna Duran, State Solo and State Ensemble. John Duran, State Ensemble. Jose Duran, All-Region Band. Denise Fernandez, State Solo. Ariana Fincher, All-Region. Natasha Flores, All-Region and All-Area. Garrett Glover, State Solo. Elijah Gutierrez, State Ensemble. Gabriel Gutierrez, State Ensemble. Kayden Heigl, All-Region and All-Area. Ashton Hennessy, State Ensemble. Kayden Hernandez, State Ensemble. Natalie Hernandez, State Solo. Willow Joyce, All-Region, Area and All-Region Jazz. Zach Lancaster, All-Region Jazz. Amanda Landers, State Ensemble. Sorry, many of these are not here. Preston Willen, All-Region and State Ensemble. Giovanni Moore, State Ensemble. Caleb Monkins, All-Region, All-Area, State Solo and State Ensemble. Caleb Perkey, what did you do, Caleb? Well, he's not here. State Solo, or State Solo, yes. Jennifer Perry, All-Region, Area. Skylar Rodriguez, All-Region and All-Area. Joseph Rubio, State Ensemble. Victor Ruiz, State Ensemble. Mackenzie Smith, State Ensemble. Jill Taylor, Solo. China Teague, State Ensemble. Jordan Trigg, All-Region Band. Lila Turner, All-Region. Ben Turney, State Ensemble. Damian Velades, All-Region. Caitlin Wallace, All-Region, All-Area and State Ensemble. Tony Whipke, State Solo. And Tommy Young, All-Region and State Solo. Before you give these kiddos a round of applause, do you notice making one of these criteria is really an accomplishment? To get two, bigger. If we've got a student up here that's making 3, 4, and 5 of these events, this is a person that puts in more work than you can imagine, and all students are be to commend it. Out of this group that are here right now, how many of you are 9th graders? That's also incredible. And out of the 20-some that are not here, there's like 4 or 5 more 9th graders. So, please give these students a warm round of applause. And despite everything you heard about our Branson trip, it was a really good trip. It's a trip with teenagers, something's going to happen. So, it was a very good trip. We had a good time. It was the first outing for us to go to Branson, Missouri, and I think that they really enjoyed it, except for, what was that place we ate? Dollywood, Dolly Parton something? Everything else was great. You should be very proud of all of these students that are overachievers, whether they're from Central Band, Lakeview Band, the Mariachi Groups. These kids are putting in work that you would not believe. And if the band director gets to the school at 6:15, and you've got 15 kids waiting on him to unlock the door, you've got some motivated kids. And it's not always because, well, Mom took me early and kicked me out of the car. Sometimes they're actually there to practice. But we're very, very proud of all these kids. We are so thankful to the Board, the Administration, and of course, to the parents for giving us these wonderful children. Another round of applause for these kiddos, and we'll get them out of here. If y'all will follow around the horseshoe.
We really appreciate your time.
Thanks, Ms. Crutchfield. Thanks for putting all that together, and it's a real privilege for us to be able to recognize students that have gone beyond district level in their competitions. And we'll move forward to public comments. I mentioned that earlier, and if anyone's here wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda, now would be the proper time to come forward. I see no one wishing to do so, so we'll move forward to Item 6, approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dendron, and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our February 11 Finance and Pre-Agenda Meeting, our February 19, 2019 Regular Board Meeting, and our January 25, 2019 Special Meeting. Are there any comments or questions or any additions we need to make to those minutes? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is reports. Most of these reports we receive in our, as part of our Friday Facts, our Student Enrollment Report. We reviewed it, our Pre-Agenda Workshop. We're, we've been running slightly, we're actually a little bit better here lately. We're down to about 60 students, I think, less than we had this same time last year. So, somewhere between 50 and 100, we've been pretty steady throughout the year. We also appreciate Ms. Harmon being here. Thank you for joining us here this evening. And then, Item C is Academic, Texas Academic Performance Report, which is this small amount of paperwork that we get to review.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Hullahan's going to help us with that. Thanks, Shelley.
You're very welcome. Board members, Superintendent and members of the audience. Texas Education Code requires that a district hold a public hearing on their Texas Academic Performance Report. TAPER is what we call it. And this report includes 6 sections, and you can see those. The Financial Report, the District Accreditation Status with the Performance, along with the Special Education Status, Campus Performance Report, including Performance Objectives, Violent and Criminal Incident Reports, the Texas Higher Education Student Performance Reports, and then the Glossary. The district's accountability is determined by their Accountability Rating and also their Financial Rating. Our Financial Rating is based on the first financial rating. You will see that we have an A Superior, and to make a comment to Jeff and his staff, they've had that rating for the last 17 years. And so, great job, Jeff and your staff. The district's Accountability Rating is based on 3 areas. It is 40% Student Achievement, Student Progress, 40% Closing the Gap, and 20% College Career and Military Readiness. And as you can see, the district met standard. You will also see up there a letter grade, a C. This is the first year that the state has assigned a letter grade, A through F, to districts, and our district received a C at 77%. San Angelo ISD Accreditation Status for the 2018-19 School Year is accredited, and you have to be accredited in order to run your school. I want to share some of the district's demographics, and I'm not going to read all of this to you, but you can look at our district size. And this was information that was gathered through P E M S in the 2016-17, I lied to you, 17-18 School Year. So, you can see our district size was 14,567. You can look at our ethnic distribution. Our economically disadvantage for this school year was 58%. That's 8,452 students. Our English Learners, and then our Special Education Students. Okay, STAR Data and STAR Performance. STAR Data continues to emphasize the effect of low literacy levels, which will affect all tested subject areas at all levels. We know that we must move forward with our efforts to build student reading skills and increase the percentage of students' readings on grade levels throughout the district. We will always continue to focus on fostering critical thinking, which will increase students' ability to discern information and approach problem-solving challenges on the standardized tests in all subject areas. In the last couple Board Meetings, Dr. Ritter and her Curriculum Instruction staff have come up and presented what we're doing, what the district initiatives are in our academic areas. And so, that's important for the growth of our students, for the growth of our district. The next slides highlight district information that we're, in most cases, we were outperforming the state average. You'll notice our attendance rate, and yearly, we outperform state averages in our attendance and our annual dropout rate. I will tell you that. Again, I want to thank you all, and you hear it every time we go to a P A S graduation because P A S impacts our annual dropout rate, and we recover students through our P A S. And so, that's on you all, and I want to say thank you because without your support, we wouldn't be able to do that. Our graduation rate, you can look for the class of 2017. Our CCMR, College Career and Military Readiness. You will notice that in 2016-17, grades 9 through 12, our district rate was 55.2%, where the state was 54%. So, look at college-ready graduates. Our district rate for college-ready graduates was 52.2% or 52%, and the state was 47%. It's a pretty good difference. And look at our AP results, and the reason I just say AP results because we don't, Dr. Ritter, am I correct? We don't really administer IB because we don't have IB in our schools. Okay, we have Advanced Placement AP. So, you look at all subjects, we look pretty aligned with the state, but when you start looking at specific subjects, our English Language Arts, you'll notice that we score about 13% higher than the state average did. Math, about 7%. Science, we need work there. Social Studies, we scored right at 14% higher than the state did. That's pretty impressive. The next slide continues, and you'll look at our Advanced Dual-Credit Course Completion. You'll look at our, our district at 44, 45%, whereas the state's at 37%. Completion of 9 or more dual credit in any subject, or 3 or more hours in English Language Arts and Math. The state is sitting right at 20%, and we're at 42%. And we can thank Howard College, we can thank Angelo State University, we can thank our teachers that went back to school to get their masters and degrees to be vetted by those universities so that they could teach in our classrooms and teach those dual credit classes. Look at our average SAT scores in ELA and Math. You look at our district, and our average score is right at 1,065, whereas the state is at 1,019. The average ACT score in ELA Math and Science is 20.7, whereas the state's 20.3. And our CTE Coherent Sequence of Courses, and what a coherent sequence of courses is, is like I'm taking Welding 1, and then I'm taking Welding 2, and then I'm taking Welding 3. I'm going through those courses. And you'll look at ours, and it is 56.7% compared to the state at 50%, 51%. And that is, again, the partnership with West Texas Training Center, Howard College, Joy Gay, who supports our programs and gets out there and gets students to enroll in those courses. In order to make sure all the arrows are going in the same direction... In order to make sure all the arrows are going in the same direction, our HR department, Mr. Kimball's department, and our Curriculum Instruction Department, Dr. Ritter's department, work to align all professional development with our district initiative, which is determined by student needs. They spend hours planning, coordinating, setting up, tearing down, and evaluating the effectiveness of the professional development. I would like to say thank you to those two departments, to those two people, because without them, we wouldn't have a focused vision. And we need a focused vision in order to get all the arrows going in the same direction. And my last piece, well, it's not my last slide, but I wanted to share with you all our state and local partners, and it's not all of them, it's not inclusive, but I really want to point out a couple of them. The Future Ready Superintendent's Leadership Network, I know we talked about that last year, but that is one out of 59, or one of 59 out of 1,031 districts were invited to participate. So we were, one of the 59 districts invited to participate, which is exciting. We have TPACK, which is Texas Public Accountability Consortium, and that is invited to participate to help create a new community-based accountability system, which some of you have been on to work with that in our Community-Based Accountability System Partnership with John Tanner. That all came out of that consortium. And you will look at all the, you can look at all the other community, Tom Green County, San Angelo partnerships that we have. There's many more here, but we appreciate all those partnerships, because without, with them, our district can support needs of students better. So we appreciate that. And for additional information on the TAPER report, here are two webs, or some websites. It'll be posted on the San Angelo ISD website, so www.sasd.org, or the TA accreditation website. They will both have information, you can just go click on there and find any answer that you want. So that is the end of the public hearing. Do you have questions?
Thanks, Ms. Hollihan. Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning our TAPER report?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And we don't have to take any board action, that's just a report, so we appreciate that. Anybody who wants to know how any specific school did, or any type of performance standard, or how each school's made up socio-economically, or anything like that, that's all available in our report. So we appreciate some reading material that we have. Our next item is item eight, consent items. We have consent items A through E. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez, and a second from Mr. Parker, to approve our consent items. Consent item A is to consider donations, we have those listed. We appreciate Kenny Frankie Architects and their donation to the district. Item B is to ratify the administration's action in sale of properties. These are properties that we're selling, that are past due on taxes, and we're selling those in conjunction with other taxing entities. Item C is to consider bid number 19-001, that's for trades bids. Item D is to consider superintendent's recommendations for 2019, 2020. As far as our administrative contracts, we reviewed those at our pre-agenda board workshop. Item E is to consider superintendent's recommendations for school year. Those are just contracts for the remainder of this year. So those are items A through E. Does anybody have any questions, or do we have any public comment concerning any of If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, consider bid number 19-003. This is for security fencing and installation. Mr. Henry's gonna walk us through that.
Dr. Detloff, President Lehman, members of the board, thank you for having us here today. Today I bring you bid 19-003, Security Fencing and Installation. During our initial district-wide security evaluation of campuses, it was decided that we would need to enclose campuses without fencing, and to increase the height of fencing to six feet. This proposal is for the removal and disposal of old fencing and the installation of new fencing at three sites, McGill Elementary, Austin Elementary, and Lee Middle School. We received four competitive bids on this project. A committee, using our scoring criteria, scored all responses. Rockin' J Fence LLC was the bidder with the highest score and a proposed cost of $63,915. That includes a $6,000 owner contingency. The administration recommends contracting with Rockin' J Fence of San Angelo for the removal and disposal of old fence, and the installation of new fence at the three sites, McGill Elementary, Austin Elementary, and Lee Middle School.
Thanks, Mr. Henry. Do we have any questions concerning our fencing bid? If not, oh, go ahead, Dr. Detloff.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. I do want to also connect, again, this work to our initiatives that we started in June with our safety procedures all across the district. As a quick recap, the information just mentioned is connected to our safety initiatives. That is the URAZE training, which is Unified Response to Active Shooter Training. Lockdown buttons were installed at all elementary campuses. We also have active shooter training that we took place this summer in an SAISD site for the first time. We have enhanced communication systems with our stay alert. We have improved access security. As mentioned previously, security systems, including cameras, which we've installed over 1,000 high-definition cameras. We also have partnered with mental health systems throughout our city to make sure that we establish a program of support for students with these mental health needs, and also campus safety procedures. We utilized security consultants with our current emergency response. So thank you, Mr. Henry, because certainly, all the initiatives you just spoke of are embedded in our district safety plan. So thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Any other comments or questions concerning our security fencing installation? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the district's recommendation of Rockin' J Fence of San Angelo for the removal and disposal of old fencing, installation of new fencing at three sites, McGill Elementary, Austin Elementary, and Lee Middle School.
Second. Thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Parker, and a second from Mr. Gallegos, to approve Rockin' J Fence of San Angelo for removal and disposal of old fencing, and the installation of new fencing. And that's in the amount of $63,915, which includes a $6,000 owner's contingency. Do we have any other comment or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. That concludes our working here this evening. We're gonna go in, under Texas Government Code 551074, to do our superintendent evaluation. This is the time of the year when we do that, so we're gonna consider doing evaluation, consider Dr. Detloff's contract and salary. And again, we're able to do that in closed session under Texas Government Code 551074. We appreciate everyone sticking around. We are leaving our executive session, and we have a motion, I believe, that Mr. Parker's gonna make.
I'd like to make a motion that we, well, first let me mention that we, for the past, maybe the past month, we have been evaluating our superintendent, Dr. Detloff. We have a valuation tool where we evaluate him on probably 10 or 12 measures, or some of them have some subtopics, and so we've been going over his evaluation for several meetings, and we've had several discussions with him. We just completed another discussion with Dr. Detloff. And based on that, the board, I'm pleased to say that we are, that we've given him a favorable review, and we certainly did not take any action in executive session, but based on what I think is, maybe I'm, hopefully I'm speaking for the rest of the board, and this is what we're gonna have to vote on, that I'd like to make a motion that we roll over his contract another year, so that he continues to have a three-year contract, and that we increase his salary to be commensurate with any increases that we make to his assistant superintendents and directors and executive directors. As we, in other words, as we give them increases, he'll get an increase that'll be in the same percentage that we give those others. Did I say that correctly, from the way the board wanted me to approach this? So if I've said it correctly, that's our motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a great motion and a second on what we've been going through. Certainly, the board members are free to make any comment. I'll make some on behalf of the board, and that's that we're all extremely pleased with Dr. Detloff and the team that he's put together. I think it's an exciting time in our district. You know, we have a lot of opportunities ahead of us, and the positive thing about the team that Carl has put together, and Dr. Detloff himself, is that we know that we've got, we're in a challenging position right now, and we have people that are in the right roles and that are highly qualified and capable of us being the district that we all want us to be, and the district that our community deserves. And we're very happy with the steps that have been taken thus far, as far as, you know, it's unfortunate that districts are, the perception that districts have statewide is based on a single day and a single test, but we understand that Carl's role and the role of our administrative team is much bigger than that. It's about building students for the future, and we're extremely happy that on all of, most or many of those other measures, we're doing quite well with. And so therefore, we have a lot of confidence moving forward, that we will, we've already taken steps, and we will take additional steps to make sure that we'll do well on that one day, when we have that one test, is what, you know, in addition to what we're currently doing. So I'm certainly, as the longest-standing member of this board, 18-year member of this board, I'm as happy as I ever have been about where we are from a leadership standpoint. And so thank you, Dr. Detloff, and I would encourage anybody else to make any comments. It doesn't need to be, you know, it doesn't need to be a love fest, but it does need, everybody does need to recognize that our board is, and we want everybody in the administrative team to know that whatever it takes, from a board standpoint, for us to continually improve, that that's where we want to be. You know, we have a commitment to our students to make sure that we give them the best opportunities. And this board is unanimously in favor of doing whatever it takes for us to do everything we can for our students. So that's all I've got to say. If anybody has anything to add to that, and speak now, or...
I'd just want to say thank you to Carl, and just know that we're always behind you, so you know that you can always look for us for support.
Okay, thank y'all. We have a motion and a second. I could ask for a public comment, and I guess I should, since our, it says that we ask for public comments. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to have Carl's job, speak now, no, that's not appropriate, but if anybody has any comments, that would be great. Otherwise, I'll, the motion is that we extend Carl's contract, which extends to three years, and that we increase his pay commensurate with what we pay other administrative leaders in our district, and we would, we'll decide that as we get further into our budgeting process. So that's a decision that we make as we enter into our budgeting process. So that's the motion, and we have a second, and I don't think we have any other comment among our board team, so I'll call for the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So thanks, Carl, for the work you're doing, and the work you will do, and we're excited about the proactive things that the district's doing as we move forward. I don't think we have any other board business. Our meeting next month is when? It's early next month, so our pre-agenda workshop's 8th, and our regular board meeting is the 15th. Becky, I'll get the actual evaluation document to you, so we can get, make everything official. I'll get that to you, hopefully by the end of the week, so. And do we have any other things that we need to cover this evening, or anything that we need to put on our agenda for a future, as part of a future meeting? If not, and here are no objection, we'll stand adjourned.